If you could all stand and join us in this salute. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And if the clerk can now do the roll call, I would appreciate it.
Commissioner Amen.
Present.
Commissioner Doris.
Here.
Commissioner Hawley.
Here.
Chair Kine.
Present.
Vice Chair Nichols.
Here.
Thank you very much. I will now open oral public comments. Please remember that anything mentioned during the open public comment cannot be voted on this evening. And if anybody would like to address the planning commission, you'll have three minutes. Is there anybody online, Stephen?
There is not.
Is there anybody in the gallery who would like to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Moving on to consent calendar. We have two past meeting minutes to be reviewed, June 10th of 2025 and May 27th of 2025. Does anybody have any questions? Then I ask for a motion to accept minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May 27th, 2025.
Second that.
Could you make a motion for the other date as well?
Make a motion for June 10th, 2025 for the minutes.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Okay. Moving on. I love these fast ones. Item number six. Commission business is to hear an addendum to the adopted McLean Community Center mitigated negative declaration, State Clearing House number 2016122057. Conditional use permit and design review. Resolution P 2025-3129 and resolution P 2025-3130.
Thank you, Chair Kine. I'm going to ask that we take a moment recess so that we can get Commissioner Christiansen's name badge up.
Shall we do roll call again so she can mark herself present?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Commissioner Amen.
Present.
Commissioner Christiansen.
Yes.
Commissioner Doris.
Here.
Commissioner Hawley.
Here.
Chair Kine.
Present.
Vice Chair Nichols.
Here.
Thank you. Okay. Then moving on to the staff presentation. If Sherri, you could introduce the project for us?
Yes.
I'd really appreciate it.
So this is probably, if not my favorite project since I've started here, it's got to be right up there. This is a really important project for the city, creating some much-needed affordable housing for seniors and people with developmental disabilities. I was fortunate enough to work with Michelle Nielsen from Plan West Partners on this project, and she is going to lead the presentation for us.
All right. Well, hopefully all the tech is working. It seems to be. So thank you this evening. And so I got a brief presentation here to give an overview of the project. And there's representatives of the, for the applicant from Greenway Partners as well, if there's any questions. And other senior staff, city staff here are also available. Deputy City Engineer and also representatives of the fire department. Okay. All right. So the project at hand is a, the site is a almost two-acre portion of a parcel known as APN 20441061. It's, it's a large parcel. So the address is a range from 3,000 to 3,200 Newburgh Road. The general plan designation is residential low density and the zoning is public facility. And sorry, there's windows on my screen. They're kind of getting in the way, but we'll work through that. So the actions requested this evening from the planning commission are to adopt addendum one to the 2017 McLean Center mitigation negative declaration, approve the conditional use permit and design review applications, and approve a request for two years to invest the entitlement instead of the standard one year. So as I mentioned, the general plan land use designation is residential low density. In this, we have a aerial photo showing the approximate location of the site on the McLean Foundation campus. It's an area of the property that's already been disturbed. You can see also a future application for a lot line adjustment that'll be coming before your planning commission, probably next month, to adjust the, if I can get a cursor here. This, the portion that is outlined in red, that's kind of on the eastward side. And to establish a 1.97 acre portion of the property, these are two existing legal parcels. And there's requirements related to the funding that the Humboldt Senior Resource Center have site control, which, so they would ultimately, upon completion of the lot line adjustment, they would acquire the property and own it in fee. Anyhow, so the general plan designation is residential low density. The identified enumerated primary uses and compatible uses are residential, single-family detached home, secondary dwelling units, also known as accessory dwelling units, public and quasi-public uses, limited neighborhood serving commercial uses, and other similar and compatible uses. The zoning of the site is public facilities, and with the use permit, residential uses are allowed. There are requirements specified in the public facilities zoning district that the use must adhere to the density and setback requirements of the RM residential zone district. And they still have to go through the design review approval process. That design review requirement doesn't apply to single-family residential. And so we have a small map, a kind of a zoomed-in shot of the zoning, which shows this kind of blue for the public facilities and with the property outlined. And then residential estate to the, to the north. And, and then the city's park, Newburgh Park, to the southwest of the site. So the project highlights is it will provide housing for seniors, primarily seniors, but there are persons with disabilities would also be possible residents. It's 66 supportive care units for residents who are both income and healthcare dependent. The Humboldt Senior Resource Center will provide paratransit for all the residents. The residents will not have private vehicles. So for appointments or shopping, the needs of the residents, they, transportation will be provided by the Humboldt Senior Resource Center. This is a service they already provide. So there won't be independent, separate private vehicles for the residents. There will be 14 onsite staff providing 24-hour care. They'll work rotating shifts. And Humboldt Senior Resource Center is part of the project, providing supportive services. That means they will be providing meals. Though the facility will have therapy spaces, there'll be shared interior and exterior common areas. And there'll be, the landscaped areas provide open space and recreation for residents, but also provide visual interest for, you know, visitors of the campus or people passing by on Newburgh Road. And another project component is the development of a 20-foot wide emergency access area roadway on the north side of building B. And then continuing on some of the project highlights is the design theme. They, the design incorporates redwood timber at entrances and other inside locations. The projects, the design was to be in scale and have used similar materials and finishes to, to complement and fits in with the existing McLean campus buildings. And then also extensive landscaping, about 6,500 square feet of landscaping, public and private, and using a lot of native, regionally appropriate species that will create habitat and then also provide respite areas and for staff and encourages well-being for residents. And the landscaping includes low-impact, impact development design features to provide pre-treatment and a stormwater runoff and to manage stormwater runoff. But they will be making use of the, some of the existing LID features that were developed as part of the McLean Foundation. They'll be, they'll ultimately flow into those wetlands. So let me get a, maybe a little pointer here to help. Oh, here we go. I don't know. Maybe this helps. Maybe not. So hopefully you can see this fairly well. Building A, which is, it's a two-story building. Over two stories, it is 45,700 square feet approximately in size. It'll be almost 40 square feet in height, 40 feet in height. And there, that building will have 50 studio units. They'll be, they're considered shared housing. So there'll be common spaces and kitchen areas that will be for the residents. And then each of the individual, the units themselves will have private bathrooms and, and space like that. And then, oh, make sure. Uh-oh. What did I do? Okay. Building B, which is the, on the north side, it's the one-story building, will be over 9,000 square feet with a height of 25 feet. This, this building will kind of parallel Newburgh Road and also the existing bike and pedestrian path that runs along the north side. And this building will have 12 studios and four one-bedroom units. And there will be 27 off-street parking spaces for staff, visitors, and the paratransit vans. And that parking area is on the westward side of the building and will be part of that, once the lot line adjustment is completed, those, those parking spaces will be on the same parcel as the building. So as I mentioned, the regulatory context for this project is important and is a little bit different as it's, it provides housing even though it's, they're not what we typically think or more familiar with, you know, detached, single-family residents. But it still provides housing and, and permanent living spaces for residents of the facility. There's no limit on the length of stay. Residents will receive supportive services to help meet their living needs and for positive, you know, more positive health outcomes. The target population is low-income seniors with health needs. And as part of supportive housing, the state law requires it to be treated as other similar type of residential uses that are permitted in the same zone. As talked about in the staff report, especially the executive summary, the applicant is also seeking, seeking a density bonus, which is a man, for projects that qualify for a density bonus, there's, there's requirements that a local jurisdiction, you know, grant certain provisions of that. And part of that is an increase in the number of units, which the applicant is requesting. So the base density is 58 units. And there's a more detailed walkthrough in the executive summary. Because the units will be affordable and income restricted to households and individuals. And by households, I mean no more than two individuals. To low and very low-income individuals and households, it's eligible for an 80% density bonus over the base density. So the potential maximum density is 105 units. And that's applied over the one- So, the potential maximum density is 105 units, and that's applied over the 1.97 acre parcel, not the larger parcel. So, actually, you applied it over that, it'd be even a bigger number. But since they, there's a lot line adjustment application pending, we thought it would be more appropriate to use that parcel size in the calculations. So, they're only seeking eight units above the base density, so 666 units. There are two waivers requested to reduce the 40% open space requirement that applies to multifamily development in that part of the municipal code. And they are providing open space. It's 33% of the 1.97 acre parcel will be open space, some of it private, some of it public-facing, but it, not the 40%. And then also to reduce the number of parking spaces for the residents, since they are, it's eligible for that waiver because they're, there's paratransit being provided for the transportation needs. And then, this is a good opportunity to maybe just go over the SEQA addendum that's in, that's part of resolution, let me get the number right. Thank you. So, for projects that were previously analyzed and, analyzed and a mitigated negative declaration or environmental impact report was prepared and approved by the decision-making authority, a, what's called a SEQA addendum can be used if there're no, if there are no significant impacts from project changes. And for the McLean Foundation in 2017, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared and ultimately was approved by the Planning Commission. And there was numerous technical studies that were prepared as part of that, that environmental review process, a biological botanical survey, wetland delineation, cultural resources investigation, geotechnical traffic study, so on and so forth. And as part of this project, they did refresh the, the wetland study, and they did also a soil survey to re, to see if there was any change in the site conditions that would warrant, you know, like additional mitigation, if the project would cause any new impacts. And the results of those studies and the additional analysis of this project is that the footprint of the site and the project as proposed fits within the eligibility requirements for mitigate, for a addendum. And the project will not result in significant changes from what was previously proposed. The circumstances under which the project is being undertaken do not require a new mitigated neg deck. An example of a change in circumstances would be if the, a new species was listed and that species was present on the site. And that the, originally, the project that was initially considered that species wasn't listed, but that's not the case here. We don't have that change in circumstances. Also, a project is eligible for a, an addendum is if it does not cause new significant impacts that were not previously analyzed, or impacts that, that they, that the impacts from the initial project, they turned out to be worse than originally anticipated. If that were the condition present, then you would do subsequent environmental document, but that's not the case based on staff's analysis and supported by the technical studies. And so, it's, as analyzed in the addendum in, which is Exhibit A of the 203129, it, staff believes that the project would be, an addendum would be appropriate for this project. And all the mitigation measures that apply to the original project that are still in place would, that, the, because sometimes the mitigation measures run longer than project completion. Those mitigation measures would apply to this project, such as the noise mitigation measure. And the, so the city found that the project doesn't propose any new changes that would require any major revisions to that environmental document, hence the addendum. That was very long. So, going, so, but that is part of the regulatory context. That's why I wanted to go over that. And as far as the conditions of approval, the applicant is required to obtain all federal, state, and local permits, develop the project, and maintain it in accordance with how it's been proposed and presented. So, the, the civil engineering plans, elevations, floor plans, landscaping plans that are either in Attachment B or they're referenced in Attachment D, B. And then the conditions of approval mitigation requirements. Also, before a certificate of occupancy is issued to enter in, to deed restrict the units, that would be part of the density bonus. And they, state law requires they be deed restricted for 55 years and then also complete the lot line adjustment. And so, the findings for approval are to find a project as compliant with SEQA, that it's consistent with the Fortuna general plan and the zoning regulations, and that it's consistent with the objective design standards. And those are walkthrough in this portion of the staff report that is company's resolution 3130. So, that is it. Well, almost it. So, we received the staff report and then applicant presentations, or it sounds like there's any questions, and then open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and ask any questions, and then adopt the resolutions by title, by real call vote. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate that. At this moment, I would like to invite the applicant to come up if they have anything to share, if they'd like to say anything. If not, that's totally fine as well.
Kurt Kahoon with Greenway Partners. Michelle really summarized it quite nicely. Going back to 2017, we've been working with the McLean Foundation. My partner, Jason Brownfield, is an architect based in Fortuna, so he's created the two existing buildings there and the third one that's proposed. So, we've done everything we can to comply with Dennis's requirements and Lauren's requirements to make this campus look, this facility look appropriate to the campus, and I think we've succeeded in doing that. We've anticipated some of the concerns around traffic programmatically. They've, they've already changed some things around how many people might bring cars to the site, and they've, again, paratransit was the primary way to, to deal with what I think most of the community's concerns would be around traffic and cars. But otherwise, we're here to answer questions. If you have any further questions, of course, we're right there.
I'm Dennis Scott. I'm the president of McLean Foundation. I worked for U River Sawmills for like 40 years and worked for Mel and Grace and Gene Lucas, and they left us a wonderful gift. It's no secret, it was $20 million gift for the community to be spent on the health and welfare of the U River Valley, and that's what we have been doing. We, they wanted the community center from day one, and so, we were able to secure some land and Greenway, we hired Greenway to build it for us, did a great job, and we're happy with that. We, I said we weren't going to build any more buildings because we did build a building for Humboldt Senior Resources, and they are a great tenant, long-term lease, and we talked about housing for them because the PACE program is so strong. And this is the culmination of that, where we're going to sell them some acreage and we're not going to build anymore. It's going to be somebody else's responsibility, but it builds the campus out, and that's really what we're looking, to have the campus built out. And if anybody went by today, we actually have two drilling, well, two holes we're going to drill to, for our possible aquatic center in one of our pieces there. So, they started today to determine if we could put aquatic center in the one lot we have there. That would be the final build out. So, it's exciting to get them there, and hopefully, the, the numbers will work. So, we're very happy with this project. They promised me a room with a gold handle, Melissa did, so I can have that one. But it's so good for this community. The PACE program is a well-funded program, and it's really needed, and I envision this, this build out to be just spectacular for the, for the valley. Thanks.
Thank you.
Before we move on to public comment, is there anything that anybody on the commission would like to say? Not necessarily technical questions, but...
Yeah, I would like to say, it's such a lovely facility. I just love it over there at the McLean Foundation. And is it structured as a care home but calling it supportive housing? I'm just asking, or is it so different?
Sorry about that. There's been a lot of changes in state housing law on what is housing considered. And with a care home, you can get into where there's licensing, and the level of care, medical intervention is to a greater degree. It, it does get confusing with what, where it lands if it's a care home versus the supportive housing. So, there, there are similarities to care homes, but it's because of the level of care, I mean, there's supportive services, but it doesn't rise up to the level of medical intervention to, you know, that you would, it would be like a care home or where non-ambulatory folks or a hospital. So, but it is, the lines are kind of blurry at times, and it does get really confusing.
No, thank you. And then the 27 parking spaces for staff, right? Was there 27? Is that for guests as well?
That would include guests, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's important to note that there will be 14 staff, but they'll be working staggered stiff, so.
Nice.
I had a question on the units. Is there, would it be allowed more than two people per unit? Like if you and your buddy needed care, you and your spouse, could you co-house in a unit, or is it like essentially forecasted for one human per unit?
There are a few, just a few units that are set up for double occupant, that two people. I believe the Greenway could provide some more clarification on that, but it's, most of the units are set up for in single-person occupancy.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to thank the McLean Foundation and the Gene Lucas. I think you've done a tremendous job out there. I think you're a real community member, and I walk there all the time. I, I applaud you and the service you've given Fortuna. This is a great project. You've done a great design. You are coming into, you know, the 21st century with innovative thoughts, and, you know, you did a great job. Thank you.
I also love the project. What I read in here in one of these reports, that it might be serviced eventually by Redwood Transit Service system? Sorry, I should know that.
In the, yeah, in the 2017 mitigated neg deck, it did have some mention of like setting up the, the design of the internal circulation to accommodate RTS service. And I, as I understand this project, this wouldn't interfere with that in future, if the funding comes available, or micro, some micro-transit may be using Fortuna to connect to RTS as an alternative to paratransit, to maybe visitors to the facility. But yeah, that's my understanding that in the future, that could be done for the larger, for the campus.
Okay. Well, I noticed that they're like reinforcing the path for the trash trucks because they're heavy vehicles. Buses are heavier. And then a public, a bus stop is a public area. Anyone can get on and off a bus at any bus stop, so it's just another consideration for placement, you know, where do you want these people?
I did prepare the SEQA document in 2017 on behalf of the McLean Foundation. So, the RTS service was researched a lot, and we had a lot of conversations with HTA and RTS, and, and the density of service is the issue. So, if you have enough riders, potential riders, then they could schedule and import a new route to that location, but it needed to be put into their planning horizon and strategic plan, and that was 2017. Lot has happened since then, obviously pandemic and other things. So, I think lobbying them to include it in their strategic plan thinking would be the next step on behalf of the city. So, that would be my recommendation based on our previous conversations. And the internal pathways have all been sufficiently strengthened, and we have done turnouts and bulb-outs at the Gene Lucas Center specifically for a future bus location.
Okay. Yeah, it's much easier to accommodate them as you go along than to go back and try to change something.
For sure.
Thank you.
Okay, then. I would like to now, to open public comment before we go to see if there's anybody online. Did the city or staff receive any comments via email or mail, any written comments?
The only comments we reserved, received were from the tribe, which we reached out to, and they were supportive of the project, accepted the wetland delineation, and just asked that we include inadvertent discovery protocol as condition of approval.
Yep, I did see that in there.
Yeah.
All right, then. Is there anybody online?
There is no one online.
Okay. And then I would like to open it up to the chambers if anybody would like to, anybody from the public would like to speak. Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. If they have any other questions for Michelle, or also, we do have our deputy city engineer and also our fire chief as well. If you guys have any questions for them as well.
I have a question on the parking requirements. It talks about the, the city code requires X amount of spots, but then it, under the public resource code, it says parking is not required, and we're making a waiver to, is that kind of a redundant a little bit?
So, the state density bonus law for qualifying projects with paratransit for the residents, they, you can get a waiver for all, 100% of the parking requirements for the residents. It's a little more ambiguous when it comes to the, like, the employees. So, we did the analysis, and for, doesn't like, I think it does incorporate the guests as well, but it doesn't really speak to state density bonus law, doesn't really speak, and the waiver that's allowed, doesn't really speak to employees. So, we did an analysis to, to provide some coverage with respect to the, the city's municipal code. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I had noticed there was a lot of information from ecology, speaking about the trash recycling and eventual organic waste bins. Looks like that stuff has been cleared up. I did have a question, though, regarding the service of meals. I'm assuming there's going to be a kitchen on-site then, and if that is the case, delivery of food, stuff, whether it's Cisco or something along, Unifire, something along those lines, just wanted to make sure that that has been, a loading docks available or some, that has been considered.
In the existing PACE clinic next door, right, literally right across the street from where this will be, that's a commissary kitchen that will produce the meals generally. And then each of these units, there's 50 units, and they're separated by, into five pods of 10. There'll be a warming kitchen in each of those pods that will bring the commissary food over. It'll be reheated. Food will be delivered, I'm sure, by Cisco and by other distributors as needed as it is right now, but I don't anticipate, although the volume of food will change, obviously three meals a day for 66 people. But it should not be like a dramatic impact to the area or to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the Planning Commission? Well, then, I would entertain a motion if anybody would like to make one.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution P. 20253129, certifying compliance with the SEQA and approving addendum one to the previously adopted MND for the McLean Community Center. State clearinghouse number, right there, Resolution P. 20253130, approving the conditional use permit and granting design review. And approving the Humboldt Senior Resources Center supportive care facility located on Newburgh Road.
Do we vote together? Those are good together? I can, no?
Each one should be at separate action.
Yeah. So, you want to just do the first one?
So you want to just do the first one?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution P. 20253129.
That's good. I'll second it.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Amen?
Approve.
Commissioner Doris?
Approve.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols?
Aye.
Chair Kine?
Yes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution P. dash 2025 dash 3130.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Amen?
Approve.
Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Doris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols?
Aye.
Chair Kine?
Yes.
I think that was everything for this item, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Welcome.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
We love it.
All right. Then moving on to item number seven, the Planning Commission's staff communications.
Not a whole lot to report, except that we are going to have to cancel our next meeting, unfortunately. We have two items that were very, very close but not quite there, and we would have had to have noticed them Monday, and because there are still some outstanding pieces, we have to, we have to push them out.
Okay.
That's really it.
Also, for the record, I would like to read in the titles of the resolutions as well. Resolution P. dash 2025 dash 3129, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna, certifying compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and approving Addendum 1 to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration for the McLean Community Center. State clearinghouse number 2016122057. All commissioners voted yes on. Moving on to Resolution P. dash 2025 dash 3130, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving a conditional use permit and granting design review approval for the Humboldt Senior Resource Center Supportive Care Facility located at 3,000 dash 3,200 Newburgh Road. All commissioners voted yes on.
Thank you, Stephen. I appreciate it. Then I would look for an motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.